I signed it, but I don't know if anyone else did, Kenny. It's been so long ago, I don't remember, isn't that saying? I just can't do mirrors, really. Yes. Will we short-staff tonight, Mark and Brady? No, that's Doug, and Doug too. Jerry's not coming either? We just barely have the quarrel. Is Jerry out of town?
Alright, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Steenville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. This is a regular business meeting of the Steenville City Council here on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, at 5:30 PM. And we've got a great crowd tonight. Couple of things to go over later in the agenda that really excited to be able to do this evening. But before we do that, let's begin as we always do with the pledge to the flags and then the invitation. So if you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, take your seats. We have David Whiteman here this evening from Grace Fellowship Church who will give our invitation.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the honor and the privilege to come and ask for your blessing, not only on our city, but those who govern it, protect us, and serve. And Father, we just come before you and we ask that you would speak, that we would listen, and we would have the ability to obey. Father, in the days past, we prayed because we believed you might change things. But as we have learned to pray, we've come to realize, Lord, that when we pray, you change us. And you give us the ability to make a difference. We thank you for the knowledge and experience, the learning that has come by learning how to pray. Our Father, we have an important week this week. We're asking your blessing on not only the spiritual difference that the day of prayer will make, but the government difference in the elections that are coming. We pray, Father, as the houses of prayer open up their churches for a whole day of honoring you, we ask that you would inhabit our prayers, inhabit our praise and our petitions on behalf of this city, this state, the nation, and the world. As the members of the Church of Steenville come together in different locations, sanctify them, make them one, in Jesus' name. We pray, Father, for the elections. We pray, Father, that you would guide and direct, and show favor, and shine on those that seek to do your will, so that we might be governed by just, holy men and women. We just thank you, Father. We thank you for what you have done and what you're about to do. Our Father, we ask guidance in this world that we live in, where many would have us to believe that hatred and violence and anger, darkness, is greater than light, love, acceptance. We ask, Father, you teach us how to live in the power of your light and love, so that we really, truly can make a difference. And let your light shine on all men. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Alright, the next item on the agenda is citizens' general discussion. This is a time during our meeting that we open the floor for any citizen in the community that'd like to come forward and talk on a topic. So at this time, I'll see if there's anyone that'd like to come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is to approve a resolution 27R-12 recognizing the Steenville Honeybee Soccer Team as the 2017 Girls 4A State Champions. And tonight, we've got that team with us, and we are so proud of you girls and all that you have done through this season. You know each other now in ways that you probably couldn't imagine before in the spirit of teamwork and commitment and dedication and putting up with the coach. All paid off. It's a team effort to win a championship, and you should be so proud of that, and we as a community are so proud of you for that. For the parents that are here tonight, thank you, your commitment, because it is a family effort as well to be able to get to this point. And we, the City Council, wanted to come together tonight and recognize all of you and what you represent for our community, and thank you. And so, at this time, I'm gonna open the floor to recognize a motion to accept the resolution.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution 2017R-12 recognizing the Steenville Honeybee Soccer Team as state champions.
Alright, motion by Mr. Nix, seconded by Ms. Zachary. Any discussion? I bet not. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote.
Amen.
So what I'd like to do is, and we'll figure out a way to do this with the camera and everything. Let me just read the resolution and just, for what it's worth, what this means is it'll go in the record for the City of Steenville forever. So 100 years from now, somebody will be opening up the records for the City of Steenville, and they'll say, "Well, looky there, in 2017," and it's got every single one of your names that's on the team that's gonna be in there. So, one for the record books. As I said, "Where is the City of, where is Steenville High School Honeybee Soccer Team won the Class 4A State Title on April 13, 2017? And whereas this feat was accomplished on the first-ever trip to the state tournament, which came on the heels of a record-setting 25-and-four season, and whereas the accomplishments of this team require determination, sacrifice, skill, and dedication, now therefore be of resolve that the efforts and achievements of the Steenville High School Honeybee Soccer Team are hereby recognized and applauded. And we, the undersigned, on behalf of all citizens of the City of Steenville, express our admiration and gratitude to these team members and also head coach Casey Wild and assistant coaches Katie Fulton and Amy..."
Truca.
Truca! Truca! Alright, I knew that. And then a bunch of girls on the team. Passed and approved this 2nd May, 2nd day of May, 2017. So, congratulations. Coach, I'm gonna give this to ya, come up here for the team. And just say congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Just kinda get here so the council members can get behind ya. And I'm gonna ask your pledge to come out here and draw this.
I don't know how they're gonna get 'em on.
Don't be standing right here.
That's great.
Alright, so girls, we've got a, girls, we've got a small token of our appreciation that we're gonna give each one of ya. Cindy Stafford, Cindy Stafford, who's kinda like our team mom here on the council. She put these together with Stacy King, and wanna thank them for doing that. But she's gonna have these for ya as you leave today, so make sure you pick that up. And then, before we take this picture, I've got something here for your coach that I think is our recognition as a community of how much we appreciate your effort as a team and to thank him personally for his leadership. A few great young women that have, that have a special bond now with the coach forever. But we as a community have a special bond with this coach. And I'm gonna present Coach Wheel, Wild, I, Wheel Wild, a key to the City of Steenville.
Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you very much.
Good job!
Appreciate you guys.
Congratulations, Coach!
Thank you again.
Thank you. The rest of this meeting's gonna be a little anticlimactic, isn't it?
Place squeezing, close, right?
Rum roll.
Y'all wanna come? Well, they're wanting to get out. Okay, where were we? That was fun, wasn't it? Alright. So Cindy's still got the recorder on, I guess, so we're good to go. So I'm gonna move on now to item 7 on the agenda, which is a presentation by Mary Saltorelli for her nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. So, Mary, if you wanna... Welcome back and give us, give us an update.
I'm waiting for my...
Your slide.
Yeah. Who's got it, I think? So, good evening to all of you. It's good to see you all again. I'm here to give you a final report. The nomination is complete, and after you accept it, Jeremy will send it to Austin, to the Texas Historical Commission this week, so it will go into them. I gave it, I gave it to another one.
Jeremy, he may need a larger hammer.
There we go. Okay? And I can use this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So, this is an aerial photograph that is at the Steenville Historical House Museum that was taken in 1966 that Dr. Baker and his students used during the inventory, and I used it in preparing the nomination. Okay, what do I? I'm pushing. Nothing's happening. Oh, good. This is a map of the district as submitted. And you can see it's the same as the last time I was here. It has not changed from that. The final nomination has 119 resources. Seventy-seven or 65% of them are contributing to the historic district. There are 42 non-contributing resources within the district. 115 are buildings. One is counted as a structure, which are the brick streets within the district. There's one site, which is the Walk of Fame, and it's nonhistoric. And then two objects, which are two monuments on the courthouse grounds. And this picture is what's known as the, was, what's known as the Telephone Exchange Building on North Bellknap, the brick building on North Bellknap that's apartments now, that has the balcony out front. The age, or, can you back up one, please? The period of significance of the district starts in 1855 with an original plat by George Erath. This plat that you're looking at right now was done by George Gentry, the Eraz County clerk in 1871, but it's a hand-copied plat from the George Erath plat. So that's a really neat deal, and that is in the Eraz County deed record books at the Dick Smith Library. Eraz laid your square out as a Shelbyville-style square. It's named after Shelbyville, Tennessee. Most of the settlers from North Texas were from an area of the country known as the Upland South, and that encompasses Tennessee, Missouri, Arkansas, and Kentucky. Of the 24 original members of the Steenville Masonic Lodge, which was established in 1864, the 24 were from Tennessee. So a lot of your settlers came from what's called the Upland South, and the design of your square reflects that. Okay. Then in 1873 is the year that the oldest existing resource within the district was built, and that's the Gentry and Shelton Building, which I know you're all familiar with. And in 1967 is the end of the period of significance in the nomination. That was 50 years ago, and that's what the federal government considers to be historic. And that year, the Steenville Savings and Loan was built, and that's a picture from the Steenville Historical House Museum that Carla found for me in a book that she was working on. And this building was designed by an architect named Joe Line, and it's international, it's modern, international style, middle 20th century international style. In order to be listed in the National Register of Historic Places, the Steenville Downtown Historic District must meet at least one of the National Register criteria. And this district is being nominated under two criterias. The criteria, yeah, criteria. The first is criterion A for its association with events that have made a significant contributions to the broad patterns of history. So Steenville's district is nominated for its association with two events or areas on a local level of significance, and the first is community planning and development. And this is a photo of King's second revised map of the City of Steenville from 1931, which is also at the Steenville Historical House Museum. And it shows the growth to the north and northwest and the continuation of the square and grid pattern of development, typical of the Shelbyville-style courthouse square. It's a pretty simple type of development, but they stuck with that all the way through the years as your city expanded. The second event that Steenville's Historic District is nominated under is commerce. And downtown Steenville was the center of commerce in the community from its early development through the middle of the 20th century. And this is a photo of Bell's Department Store in 1960. So that building is contributing because it retains the appearance of a mid-20th-century department store, even though its late 1890s look was changed in the 60s. It's within the historic period of significance. Many of the buildings within the district are vernacular construction. Oh wait, I skipped something, hold on. I'm trying to move it, thank you. Steenville's downtown district is also nominated under criterion C for the distinctive characteristics of your architecture throughout the period of significance. And many of the commercial buildings within the district are vernacular construction or local construction with no specific style, but they significantly reflect the retail concepts and architectural trends of the eras. These are called one- and two-part commercial blocks by Richard Blochstruth in his book, The Buildings of Main Street. The two-story buildings are what he calls two-part commercial blocks, and they distinctly separate the uses of the lower floor, which is usually retail, from the upper floor, which is usually residential or offices. And visually, you can see that when you look at these buildings. The one-part commercial blocks are the one-story buildings, and they usually have an upper wall with a awning over a glass storefront, which is the retail, the best way to advertise a retail place at the time. During research, I found that several noteworthy architects had an influence on Steenville and its special sense of place. And this is pretty remarkable, because in Granbury, we have two buildings that I know of that were designed by architects. Steenville, within your period of significance, has 10. So that's amazing. And the first, the first I'm gonna start with is J. Riley Gordon. He designed the Eraz County Courthouse. He also designed at least 20 other courthouses in Texas during the late 19th and early 20th century, including the Ellis County Courthouse in Waxahachie, the San Antonio, I mean, the Bayhart County Courthouse in San Antonio, and the Decatur, the Wise County Courthouse in Decatur. So, then he also designed the First National Bank Building, which is individually listed in the National Register and has a recorded Texas historic landmark. This building, the Cajun Crow Building in Crow Opera House, is attributed to J. Riley Gordon also, but it's also attributed to an architect named J.J. Kane. So some further research is required there. Kane was an architect from Fort Worth, who in 1886, about the time this building was constructed, was the first president of the Texas State Association of Architects. Fort Worth architect Wyatt C. Hedrick had a tremendous influence on the architecture in Steenville. And he is a really well-known Texas architect from Fort Worth who designed really noteworthy buildings throughout the state, including Will Rogers Coliseum in Fort Worth and both of the TNP Terminal Buildings there. In Steenville, his designs occurred during the middle of the 20th century, beginning during the 1930s and the New Deal. In 1938, he designed the Art Deco-style Long Hotel for Mr. and Mrs. Charles Long. It was built at a cost of $35,099 for the lot. The Long Hotel offered air conditioning, a first-floor grand lobby with terrazzo tile, a dining room, and a kitchen. And in 1948, it had 40 guest rooms that accommodated visitors who paid $2.25 a night to stay at the Long Hotel. Wish we could do that now. During the early 1960s, shortly before Wyatt Hedrick passed away, his office in Fort Worth designed the Eraz County Jail in Steenville in an international style. And this is a sketch that Hedrick's office did of the jail building before it was built. It was built in 64, and he did that sketch in 63. He also designed the 1938 Works Progress Administration Rustic Steenville Recreation Hall. He designed the Recreation Hall that you own, and the 1938 to 1940 American Legion Hall on East Washington Street. We attempted to expand the boundaries, the district boundaries, to include these two significant buildings, but were not successful. However, Greg Smith at the Texas Historical Commission, who's the National Register Coordinator, he recommended that individual nominations be prepared and submitted for the Recreation Hall and the American Legion Hall. And if they are listed in the National Register, as we've discussed before, that would make these buildings eligible for grants for the city. And American Legion is also a nonprofit, and you can also take advantage of the state tax credits, so. All of Wyatt Hedrick's original drawings are preserved at the Alexander Architectural Archive at the University of Texas Libraries in Austin. And that's a biggie, and I think something that if, if there's interest in the Long Hotel for someone, for a developer to be able to come in and access the original drawings of the hotel would be big. Dallas architect Mark Lemon designed Steenville's Art Deco-style US Post Office Building in 1935 during the New Deal. And he's known for his design of the Tower Petroleum Building skyscraper in Dallas and the Hollis State in Fair Park. So you all had some really renowned architects here in Steenville doing designs of buildings. You have several examples, several examples of mid-20th-century post-war modern and international-style architecture, including the City Hall Building designed by architect Stanley Brown of Dallas and built for a total cost of $78,000. And this is a copy of the city's invitation to the open house for the new city hall in 1954. The nomination process from here is that as, when it's received by the Texas Historical Commission, the National Register Coordinator Gregory Smith will review it. I will work with him to do edits and revisions that he requests. He will come here, and the Texas Historical Commission will hold a public meeting in Steenville to inform the owners. And that will be advertised through a legal notice in the newspaper. And he said that will probably happen sometime in August. The National Register State, then it goes to the National Register State Board of Review meeting on September 16th in Midland. He's shooting to get it ready for that meeting. Then there'll be more edits after the State Board of Review goes over it. That's a group of qualified preservationist historians and who take a look at it and approve it. Then it will go to the National Park Service. It'll be signed by the state historic preservation officer and go to the National Park Service for review. There's a State Board of, excuse me, State Board of Review Meeting in Fort Worth on Saturday, May 20th, at 8:30 AM at the Fort Worth Women's Club Building. If any of you are interested in attending that to see what a State Board of Review Meeting is like, I thought some of you might be interested in that. And lastly, I have several acknowledgements I'd like to make, starting with all of you, Mr. Mayor and council members, to thank you for your enthusiasm. And many members of the Steenville community, thank you all for the enthusiasm for this project and support and the help with the work to make it happen. Dr. T. Lindsay Baker and his students began this whole process with their excellent survey of historic resources in Steenville, which was the basis for the nomination. And Dr. Baker is here, thank you, Dr. Baker. And he's been very supportive as I've gone through this process. Volunteers at the Steenville Historical House Museum helped me with research materials and provided photographs used in the nomination, including Cindy Shipman, Sherri Knight, and council member Carla Tressel. Staff members at the Dick Smith Library were also extremely helpful providing... providing access to their local history collection, especially Amanda Pape, coordinator of their archives. Janice Horak at Tarleton recommended me to Michelle Dunkerly, who pushed for this project and bought me to Stephenville several years ago as she worked to achieve historic preservation tools like this and economic development that comes from that for Stephenville. And Ashley Fierbacher has been especially supportive and helpful. Local historians, county residents, and business owners took time to talk to me and point me in the right direction for research and provided me with invaluable information, including Zetus and Sherman Edwards, Kathy Hartman, Wayne Sherrod, Deborah Robertson and her mother, Alta Lois Pipes, Jennifer Carey, and Carol Gibson. And city staff members have provided a tremendous amount of information and support, including Jeremy Allen, Addison Winslow, who prepared all of the maps for the project, Stacy King, and Cindy Stafford. So thanks to you all. And do you have any questions?
Thank you for that report. Any questions for Mary?
I do have some comments. I read through it, Mary, and it was so interesting. It was really interesting, very thorough.
Thank you.
And I've already asked Jeremy, I'd like four copies of, of the nomination, one for the Stephenville Library, one for the Dublin Library, one for Tarleton, and one for our Archives of the Historical Museum because it has so much information in it.
Thank you, Carla.
And I just wondered, after this lengthy process, are most nominations approved? Or how does that work?
As far as I've... You want to help me with that, Dr. Baker? I've never known of one that was not approved. But the ones I've worked on and the ones he's worked on have been approved. So I've not run into that where they haven't been approved.
Do you have anything you want to add, Dr. Baker, to that question?
The answer is yes. They're occasionally either tabled or not approved.
Really? Okay.
When they reach the State Board of Review. Normally, after they pass the State Board of Review and are revised and go over to the National Park Service, it's a rubber stamp.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So that's going to be the biggie, and that State Board of Review.
If you haven't read, you should because it's really interesting.
Thank you, Carla.
Any other questions for Mary? Okay, I, I will entertain a motion then to accept the report.
I make a motion that we accept Mary Saltirelli's nomination to National Register of Historic Places.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Trussell, seconded by Ms. Zachary to approve the nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. Any discussion? If all are perceived by those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. And Mary, thank you for your, your work on this.
Thank you. I really enjoyed getting to know everyone here and getting to know so much about your town. I think I know more about Stephenville now than I do about Granbury. So, thank you.
There's more to know here.
And, and Dr. Baker, I want to thank you for being here tonight and, and your work with your classes to help lay a lot of the groundwork for this. It is to be commended. I thank the partnership. Jeremy, your work partnering with Tarleton to, to get that done at kind of a, I don't want to say cut rate, but it was, it was very good to have the student participation in that to get that together. And then just to remind, remind us that what this will do now is, is make many of these buildings eligible for very, very lucrative federal financing dollars that basically will help for the renovation of many of these structures at a greatly reduced price. And that should, should steadwell for the square. And maybe it means that oldest building identified will, will get a, will get a facelift and a, and a new, a new tenant out of all this. And I think that's really what's going to happen out of this. And we're going to, we're going to see that revitalization. It's also good news for me to hear that we beat Granbury 10 to 2, so. All right, the next item on the agenda from the Planning and Zoning Commission is annexation policy, and I'll turn it over to the committee chair for that, Red Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. The annexation policy that, that we have before us essentially is what we worked on a few weeks ago in workshop, outside of some minor adjustments. Two or three years ago, there was a, a need determined that we need to look more into annexation. And there was a committee formed. And through this committee, we did a considerable amount of studying, did quite a bit of work, and we faced some obstacles and some interruptions. And so I'm, I'm very pleased to see this policy in front of us here tonight. It would be, it would not be fair if I did not mention those on the annexation committee. So if y'all bear with me just a second, I'd like to recognize Jerry Warren, Shelby Slosson, Nate Heller, Boyd Wagner, Richard Patronas, Metta Collier, Janet Whitely, Steve Patterson, Seth Moore, Kent Sturone, David Basket, Kathy Haynes, Greg Brunner. I'd also like to recognize the work of Judy Miller, Noah Cullis, and Jeremy Allen on the end that picked up the football and ran it in the end zone when there wasn't really anybody left. Well, you did well, Jeremy, and, and it, it has, it has been a challenge. But, you know, essentially what we have, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about the, the policy in itself. If, if you look at it, you know, to me, it is a, it is a guide that is going to tell us the who, what, where, when, and how regarding the annexation, annexation processes. There are a couple of interesting features that, that are in this that I would like to point out. Myself being annexed into the community back in 2007 has given me an interesting perspective. It's not necessarily about me, but, but when you go through this process, you, you start to look at things a little bit different. And there's, there's two things that I think that actually, as, as we've all talked about it, that we've tried to, to stay more focused on. And that is that whenever we annex property, it needs to be economically justified for the city. And we also want to try to minimize the impact on forced annexation for those that might happen to, to be subjected to that. And I do think that there are a couple of things in this policy that, that hit, just focus on that very well. And there is a fiscal impact analysis, what I would consider more of an economic feasibility that should keep us on track regarding that aspect. And also, there's been several conversations. I know Kenny and I have had several conversations of how to, to, those being annexed, if there's a possibility that they might be able to barter a better deal. That sometimes annexation is going to sting, but it doesn't necessarily have to hurt. And we have some language in here that, you know, there's discussions. Should we do this through ordinance? Should, should we look at it through the policy? And it's been more adopted to, to the service agreement plan. And, and that's the nuts and the bolts on the infrastructure and who pays and that type of thing. So I'm really, I'm really proud of, of those, those two features, and, and it's, it's a relief to have this policy done. And with, with that said, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the city Stephenville Annexation Policy and dissolve the Annexation Committee. Is that fair?
I second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Harrison, seconded by Ms. Trussell to adopt, approve adoption of the annexation policy and dissolve the Annexation Committee.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to commend the committee for their work because I know they have put in countless hours doing research, reading, refining the policy, and, and bringing back a document that I believe will serve the city well far into the future. I, I know that, that Red and the other committee members have worked very diligently on this, and I, I want to thank them for that service to the city because I think it's very important for the city and for the growth of the city as well.
Right. Other comments? Let me just say this. I, I echo what you're, what you're saying, Alan, and I, I want to commend, you know, Red for sticking with it. And also want to commend those citizens that participated in the committee. I mean, that, that was a very diverse group, provided a lot of great input. And you, you kind of kept them together, but it, it did come together, I think, in a very good product. And some might ask, well, hey, this, this guy that got annexed and, and so he came in and created a policy that, that, that does something different. But I want, I want it to be very carefully understood that this policy actually will make it more efficient and effective for us to proceed through annexation decision-making. And so it actually provides us a playbook for the community. It takes the mystery out of it, and it helps us all understand, here are the pieces of the puzzle, and here's how the process works. And it's, there's no secret about it. And I, I think it will actually help us, you know, work through this as a community in a much more cooperative and collaborative manner. Now, there's, there's one point I wanted to make here, Alan, in this policy that I think is very important for you as our city administrator to help us as a council with. And I'm going to quote a, a famous general, so this is really important, what I'm about to say, so. Dwight Eisenhower said this, that plans are nothing, planning is everything.
Correct.
Plans mean nothing, planning is everything. Here's the guy that planned D-Day, who, who said, "The plan means nothing. It's the planning." Well, on page 10 of this policy, it speaks to the annexation program, which is really a 10-year look at annexation, which, when we think about it, it's going to match up very well with our capital improvement planning process that has a 10-year view. But there's a very important sentence in here that we cannot forget. And that is, "The annexation program shall be updated annually." One of the problems with annexation discussion, as we entered into it, at least I did, is it had become so stale or it had not been talked about. Everybody was scared to death the minute it was mentioned. And I think if we have an annual review of this, we, we have a better understanding in our community. Where are these opportunities and where should we go? And it's better understood by everybody. So I think of all the document, that one sentence right there is the key to the success of this, of this, all this hard work. If all we do is put this on the shelf and declare victory, the plan means nothing, as Eisenhower said. So I just want to thank everybody for their work and just, Alan, ask you to help guide us through that in, in the future. Any other comments? If all will proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. Thanks. All right, our Finance Committee report tonight. I got a call early this morning from Mr. Sveen, who's in Austin, trying to work a bill through the House, I guess. And then a second subsequent email from Mark McClinton, who's on the committee. Neither of them could be here tonight. So Monica, we'll turn this over to you to give us the, the finance report and the, the items there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let me, let me do this also because the, the committee was going to report that we reviewed the comprehensive annual financial report. And what we had done, we had approved that at the last council meeting, but we had asked to come back as a, as a committee to look at the report and just have a moment to kind of digest everything that was in there. And so the committee did, did that and went through a, a discussion about the comprehensive annual financial report. And there was no action taken that evening. It was just reviewing in, in more detail that. Also, item C, the E. Ross County Humane Society. Matt Harpole came and, and gave a, a presentation, a recommendation for some options that we're pursuing with the E. Ross County Humane Society. We had a great discussion, and there were some, many ideas that were, were tossed around with some potential avenues. And they, they took those and said, we're, we're going to go back and, and look at how to come back to the council with some ideas from the suggestions that were made that night. So of the committee items that took place, there's one that Monica and I will turn to you that deals with an ordinance that will allow us to adopt the, the budget amendments for the mid-year.
Yes, sir. So we reviewed the mid-year adjustments to the budget for our fiscal year ending September 30th, 2017. There was also a request made for the K-9 Tahoe to become a take-home vehicle as we have that in our budget. There's no additional money, per se, required for that, but does need approval. So the, the attached document includes the budget summary and all the detailed budget adjustments. It probably looks a little different from what we presented to the Finance Committee because as per Mr. McClinton's suggestion, I moved some of the revenues so it could, you could see more clearly how the revenues and expenditures went together. Pretty much everything on here is items that were already approved by council. Actions were taken previously that then require adjustments to the budget. There are a few items that, that didn't, but most of it was already from a previous council action. So if you really don't have any, any questions on it, per se, we do have to have an ordinance to amend this.
Okay, so all entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to consider adopting ordinance number 2017-004, providing budget amendments for the remainder of the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2016, and ending September 30th, 2017, to include, I believe, the Tahoe that we approved. Or does that have to be a separate motion?
No, you can make it part of the...
Okay, to include the approval to take home the Tahoe, the K-9 Tahoe.
The K-9, okay.
Second that, Mayor.
All right, the motion by Ms. Zachary, seconded by Mr. Nix to adopt ordinance 2017-004, providing budget amendments for the remainder of the fiscal year to include the, the K-9 vehicle adjustment. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. And thank you for your work on that, Monica. I will note for the council, our discussion that we had, and, and this, this mid-year budget was more aligned with the monthly execution strategy instead of a mid-year major adjustment. So we're, with your financial oversight, we're moving toward more of a monthly execution, understanding of our budget. And so thank you for that work. All right, next on, item on the agenda is to consider approving residence restrictions for city representative to E. Ross County Appraisal District Board Directors, and I'll ask Mr. Barnes to brief the council on this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I received a telephone call from one of the council members probably about three weeks ago asking about whether there was a requirement for the Central Appraisal District Board of Director representative appointed by the council to live in the city limits or not. I told him at that point I did not know and kind of said, kind of a strange question, how did that, you know, why? And he said that our representative, Andrew Hansen, Jr., had moved from Stephenville to Morgan Mill. We got Mr. Thomas involved. We did some research from a staff perspective, and it revealed that the controlling statutes do not require that the representative of a taxing entity live within that taxing entity. Consulted the mayor how to go about this, and we decided it would be best to put this on the agenda, let the council decide if a policy needed to be developed whereby the representative needed to be a resident of the taxing entity in the city of Stephenville. And if so, take it to the nominations committee to go through the, the process, to notify Mr. Hansen and to work for either another representative or whatever. But at this point, what we need is policy direction from council saying, yes, this person needs to live in the city limits. No, they need to live in the taxing, in the CAD district. We just... This is one of those things where staff comes to council and goes, we don't know. So that's where we are.
So, so Alan, your recommendation is for us to, to refer this to the nominations committee for a review and maybe bring back either a policy recommendation and action.
That is correct.
Following that. So I guess just open that up for discussion if, if... So I guess just open that up for discussion, if there's another idea, or we think that's adequate for this.
I think that's acceptable. But I have a question. Do you, how many representatives do we have, just one?
We have one.
That's what I thought.
From the city of Stevensville.
Okay.
Alan?
As y'all were researching this, did y'all find that the residency requirement was a part of some of the other cities and appraisal districts for their representatives, or was it?
No, sir. We researched, we researched state law to determine if it was a requirement that they live in the district. We have not contacted, to my knowledge, we've not contacted other entities to determine if they have that requirement or not.
Okay, I was just curious what their policies were. The state statute doesn't require it, but we sometimes adopt our own policies, right?
Correct, and that's where we're headed with this. Do we want to adopt our own policy?
What other entities send representatives?
I presume the school districts do, and county.
County.
County, duh-duh. I think there's five.
Okay.
It's usually broken down by the amounts of taxes that they receive, the number of votes that they get.
Okay. Well, if it's all right with Sheri, you're okay with.
Yeah, I think it sounds like probably something we ought to at least look at.
Right, so Alan, we'll just refer this to the nominations committee, and just ask that you bring that back to the council. You think you can do that in May or June? June, it is May.
It is.
We'll try to have it by the June meeting.
You can do that tonight? Sure, let's go ahead, let's start this over. All right, so we'll target June, and if there's not, if you just can't get there from here, then just give us an update at that time.
Will do.
Okay.
Mayor, there may be some committee changes after the election that may create a problem for that. I don't, we don't know, but.
Right.
And some of the council members that are here now, if they stay, they may choose to be on different committees by that time, so you may.
So June, July, July, I mean, I don't know, July.
Let's shoot for July.
July, okay. So we'll have to get a report back on July for that.
Yes.
I think Alan's making predictions.
That, Alan?
All right, moving right on here. Item 11, consider potential contract for asset management plan. Alan, you were.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one of the things that I was directed to do when I came to work here is begin work on a capital improvement plan. In researching the most effective method for the developing a capital improvements plan, in talking with Nick and the other folks and doing research from other cities, the basis for the capital improvement plan is actually a plan called the Asset Management Plan. And what that does is basically evaluates the current situation in your community. If you look at the street assessment plan and expand that in your mind, out to the water sewer, stormwater facilities and equipment that the city has, that's what an AMP plan does for you. It looks at the current situation, it makes suggestions on how to proceed, it looks at the financial resources available, and the example that we are pursuing actually gives a letter grade like you do in school, A through F. The city of Kennedale did one of these about two years ago, two and a half years ago, and they used a cooperative effort between the graduate program of, the MPA graduate program of the University of Texas at Arlington and a Canadian company called Public Sector Digest. I talked to, I reached out to Public Sector Digest, and they quoted me a price of $20,000. After I picked my teeth up from the floor, I reached out to Alejandro Rodriguez, who is the chairman of the MPA program at the University of Texas at Arlington. Dr. Rodriguez was very excited about the possibility of doing this work for us. We went, Jeremy and Nick and I went to Arlington to meet with Dr. Rodriguez, and we also met with Bob Hart, who is the city manager at Corinth, who was the city manager at Kennedale when they did their AMP program, who also teaches the capstone program of the MPA program at UTA. They were very excited, and again, after I picked my teeth up off the floor, when they told me how much it would cost, I could not wait to get it in front of the council, because rather than paying $20,000 to a private firm, they say it will take two semesters at $1,000 per semester for them to develop this plan. Not only will this give us basically what we have with the street assessment plan, or the pavement assessment plan, but it will even go into the details of an inventory of our street signs. And these, going through a different university's MPA program, I know how important these programs are to the students to make sure they get them right. And to assuage any concern that the students may not be qualified to do this, most of the students in an MPA program are already local government employees. As a matter of fact, the person that was going through the program when Kennedale did theirs was one of the supervisors, and I don't know the exact title, of the planning department for the city of Fort Worth, who was trying to move to a department head or a department director or a division director's position to get the MPA. My capstone program did the Trinity River for the city of Dallas, and they took some of the suggestions and actually did the suggestions that my class recommended, or are working on some of the recommendations. So this is a, this is a very serious thing, not only to the cities, but to the students. And for $2,000 total, it'll take approximately nine months, it'll take the two long semesters of next year to do. We could have it, we could have them gather the information for one semester and then pay the other $20,000 to have them have it back in six weeks, but we waited this long to get a plan. I say, let's go with UTA for both aspects, the data gathering and the data analysis. As a matter of fact, I just kind of off-handed mentioned to Dr. Rodriguez, "Hey, when we finish this, you can do our CIP." And he was excited about doing that. So I don't see how we can go wrong. I would love to partner with Tarleton on this, but these guys have the experience, they know how to guide the class to do this, and I think that right now, this is our best alternative, and therefore staff respectfully recommends y'all letting us pursue the contract with UTA.
Questions for Alan?
So whose idea was it to use UTA?
Yes, sir. The mayor presented me with a portion of the Kennedale program. I downloaded the entire document, talked to Nick about it, Dave, I think I gave Nick a copy of it. We said, "Let's reach out to this company," and I said, "Well, heck, let's reach out to UT Arlington." I researched the MPA program. Dr. Rodriguez was not the director of the program when they did Kennedale. Sent him an email, and he said, "Yeah, I'm interested, can you come over and let me visit?" And so it was kind of a joint effort between everybody on how to get this done.
And obviously, you feel comfortable with the information will be conveyed back to us, so.
Yes.
I want to commend y'all. I think this is absolutely excellent, and I think we need to see more of it, you know, when we can. It might not be that it fits every bill, but, you know, it seems like it does here.
Yes.
And these are the type of things that I talk about, and it would be very nice if we could look at Tarleton State University as a resource on some things as well. So anyway, I commend y'all.
We are looking to them for some help, or for assistance on some other things, but we're in such a, again, to use a military analogy, we're in such a target-rich environment. We're so close to so many of these major universities. I mean, my alma mater, UT Dallas, is working to become a tier one. UT Arlington is working to become a tier one university. You know, as far as I'm concerned, we've got enough to go around.
Yeah. Well, and there are areas of expertise that Tarleton can provide to us, just like we mentioned earlier tonight with Dr. Baker and the work they did with the historic district, they've got some assets in the business college that.
Yes, sir.
We can use.
Engineering.
I mean, we just need to keep our eyes open for opportunities. Are there comments, or?
I had a con, I want to tell you how much I also appreciate you finding an alternative and thinking outside the box. Much appreciated, Alan.
Thank you.
Okay. Here, Alan, anything?
Yeah, I was going to agree with that. I think that's, it's just, it sounds excellent. My, when you say the two long semesters, talking about it would start this fall, and then the spring.
It would start about Labor Day, yes.
And then be completed at the end of the spring semester of 2018?
May, yeah.
Okay, so I just will give approval and direction to proceed with that.
Yes, sir.
Randy, do you want us to take a vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Got money involved.
So let's go ahead and.
If I could say one more thing, please understand, this is not the end destination, this is just part of the journey. There's a lot that we have to do between now and September, when this starts, as far as the planning goes, and there's some, there's going to be quite a bit after this as well.
Okay. Journey begins with the first step, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the contract with asset management through UTA.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Trussell, second by Ms. Zachary, to allow staff to enter into contract with the University of Texas Arlington for an asset management plan. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. All right, thank you, Alan, for the work on that, and look forward to that coming together. Our next item is our monthly budget report. Monica, back to you.
Mayor, council. We reviewed the financial statements ending March 31st, 2017, and provided a review for you in the packet. Once again, things seem to be moving, you know, as we budgeted for, so that's a good thing. For our property taxes, we received $103,000 for the month of March. That's $148,000 more than we collected through March 31st of last year. The county usually collects about 96% to 97% of the city's property taxes as of March 31st, so the 5.1 million that was collected through March 31st of this year is 96% of our amount budgeted, so it appears that we have budgeted appropriately. For our sales tax, we received $450,000 in sales tax in March. That's $185,000 of our target budget, which would be 50% through March 31st. We budgeted $152,000 under last year's actual revenue collected, so really only being $34,000 less than the same period last year is actually a little bit better than what I would anticipate. For our revenues, our 50% target budget for our operating revenue is $11.1 million. We received $13.8 million in operating revenue, that's $2.7 million more, which is our property taxes, our sales taxes, and some of our service charges. For our expenditures, the 50% target budget for our operating expenditure is $9.4 million. We've expended $8.7 million, which makes us $650,000 under budget. For our operating revenue that we received last year was $13.6 million, as compared to the current year's $13.9 million, resulting in $313,000 more, which is mainly due to our property taxes and some of the intergovernmental grants that we received this year. The operating expenditures last year were $8.3 million, as compared to the current $8.8 million, which is a $455,000 increase. In our general fund, the $160,000, $116,000 increase was caused by prior year personnel vacancies, plus we added some positions to personnel this year. In the utility fund, the $202,000 increase was for the Tarleton Methodist Ranch Sewer Study, the Eastside Sewer Project, and we had some higher maintenance costs this year. And in the special revenue fund, the $146,000 increase was due to the creation of CETA, and we also purchased a signalized crosswalk and the electronic ticket riders. We have spent $298,366 of the $750,000 budgeted for our street improvement as of March 31st. Also, if you'll notice in some of the information provided, there's a new chart on the sales tax. The mayor requested a 12-month rolling comparison, so I've provided that in a graph form for you.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Monica? Okay, again, thank you very much for that summary, it's very helpful. But next on the agenda, the consent agenda, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Mr. Nix, second by Mr. Harrison, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. This moves us to the comments by the city administrator.
Mr. Mayor, before I start the calendar, I do want to let council know that the Boski River Trail is cleared for construction by Tech Dot and the railroad. We are going to be developing the construction timeline in the near future, and we're coordinating that with railroad, Tech Dot, and the construction timeline. So we're good to go for that. On May 6th, we have the election at the courthouse from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. May 10th, we have a P and Z meeting. May 12th, we have the city employee relay-for-life hamburger fundraiser. May 16th, we have a call meeting of the council to canvass the election returns, and on May 29th, the city offices will be closed for Memorial Day.
Okay, any questions for Alan? And we'll, council members.
There's not many people here tonight, okay.
This is what a five-member council looks like. I like it, I like it.
I don't know, it seems kind of lonesome up here.
Brendan, if you could come and join us.
I again want to congratulate the soccer team, and we also had a theater group make it all the way in Winston State, so congratulations to the theater group also. Four of the council members participated in the spelling bee at First United Methodist Church. Doug Sveen, myself, and Sheri were contestants, and Brady was the emcee and called out the words. I think he mispronounced them, that's probably why we misspelled them much.
I'm going to blame it on that, yes.
We can blame it on Brady's pronunciation.
Since he's not here, yeah.
Anyway, it was a very worthy cause, and they raised $4,300 approximately, and that's for their after-school program. And the other thing, it's been a really sad week for the community, and I just ask that everybody keeps them again family in your prayers this week.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, uplift democracy, exercise your God-given right to vote, and Saturday is going to be election day, so, if you would.
Mr. Nix?
Mayor, I'd like for y'all to know that this council meeting has lasted slightly more than one hour, because Mr. Sveen is not here. And I just wanted that duly noted for the record.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. All right, I got a couple of things. I want to come back to the historic designation presentation, and Alan, I ask you to please make note to reach out and make sure a note is sent to the American Legion about the potential for them to have that building historically designated, if they were pursued at, and obviously, the city owns the red hall, so we can notify ourselves of that, but I think sending a note to the American Legion would be very helpful. Also, I want to remind, and it was mentioned, as we opened 7:00 a.m. at the courthouse, the National Day of Prayer this week begins, and then next Thursday, May 11th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., there'll be a reception to welcome Alan Barnes and his wife Brenda, and that'll be in the city hall lobby, so we want to encourage everyone to come out and meet Alan and his wonderful wife Brenda, and get a chance to meet and get to know them a little better, so ask you to do that, please. So ask you to do that, please. Four to 6:00 p.m. 4:00 p.m. Thursday, May eleventh, the city hall lobby. And get word out there. I also want to, and I, there'll be much more to follow on this, I know. But I wanna let the council know and the citizens that today received the official notification, a letter from Cindy Stafford notifying us of her impending retirement from the city. It'll be effective July fourteenth. And so we are excited, you know, for you. And we will, you know, look forward to celebrating that with you, Cindy. But I just wanted that to be publicly noted this evening as a part of the meeting. So bittersweet. We'll say it many times, I'm sure. Okay. With that, I will call us into executive session in compliance with Texas Open Meetings Law, Section 551-074, Personnel Matters. Oh, yeah. Thanks, Kevin.